For the, um, for the 29th at 6:00?
At 6:00.
That would be best.
That's tentative for now and it would be, I would let you know if we set that and if we won't have that material back in time, do you still want to meet in budget for that night?
No.
No, if we don't have the, if we don't have the-
Then you want to turn the 4th-
Correct.
Into a special meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right, and on to the planning for the anniversary, do we have any reports of items that we can firm up from our meeting? I know that you were given a, another copy of, I think you were given another copy of the schedule, that you have a tentative one but it's wrong, we, we had made changes to that, I think it was-
That's what, and actually I, I can update that if you want.
We could basically work from the minutes where the minutes I've set at 4 pretty well, the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting.
This is a floating, uh, schedule anyway.
Right, yeah.
Itinerary, so.
Exactly.
We'll, we'll adjust as we go on.
Right, I just didn't have, yeah, I didn't have a chance to update it, so.
Um, so I have several questions.
Sure.
Um, one is, we were going to highlight some of our, um, things that we do best and one is the assessor's office. So, as we're talking to Fran, is there, do you want to have a tent at our thing on September 19th or do you want to do something special?
Um, a tent on the Sept- on September 19th, we raised, and I'm thinking, um, I'm thinking of, of having, um, recorder deets off, come out to talk about faculty training orders when there isn't a low of the place.
Okay.
It's a very popular discussion and other conferences have had it.
So you'd want a program night, uh?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I was thinking, so I'd like to talk to the, um-
So that would be during the week probably at 6:30 or 7:00, okay.
Yeah, night, so I thought that that would be a good program to bring in.
Um, so the other thing that I, um, question I have, um, besides the insurance question, you know, insuring the run and the party in the park and stuff like that, is staffing and I think it's important that all the staff be available for, you know, at least a couple days beforehand and the day of that event.
Okay.
That's what, um, then, um, as we were talking about bands, Mike has his two in place, the Redmans canceled or can't do it now, so do we want to get a third?
Yeah, just ask, ask your, uh-
Could you, I'm not a good music person, Mike.
No, no, ask the guy, ask your, uh-
For their reference.
Michael.
Okay.
Yeah, ask him for, if, because you said that he would be able to help, so.
He said he would help you.
Just, yes.
What kind of band do we want?
Something like-
Similar to the Redmans.
Yeah.
A band similar to the Redmans, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
That's well-known and has a good following and see what he can come up with.
Okay, so now our vendors for the September Party in the Park, I'm calling it, I don't, I think that's a term that they use when they do the, some other event in town, but, um, so I have Chuchu, Labara, Molly's, Empanadas, Aunt Diana's and 34? And a smoothie truck?
Sounds good.
A smoothie truck, if we can get the smoothie truck that comes to the farmer's market, that's a big hit.
Yeah, maybe we can discuss this more in the committee of the hall, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, stage and sounds, um, I did talk to Jerry Owen and he would be willing to organize the run. Um, Tom was talking about a mudder run, which where you have obstacles, but, um, Jerry said that would increase insurance costs if we did that.
And I don't know if we're going to be able to convince the village to make mud puddles and, and, you know, on the course, which is, you know, difficult. I know Brookfield did one, uh, obstacle course run, um, and that was the end of it, never again.
Never again, okay, well, I would be willing either just to do a regular run-
I think we just-
A walk run?
Yeah.
A walk run, yeah, a walk run or, um, the other thing I think is really fun is a color run where everybody wears white and they throw colors at you.
Yeah, lock him down and make sure that he will, he's locked in and that's going to happen.
Okay, I, I, I meet with him tomorrow, so.
Yes.
Um, so do we definitely want a walk run then, like a mile walk and then the 5K?
Well, we were talking about the 5K, that's three months.
Miles, right, but if you're generally, when you have a 5K and you have a run-walk, the walkers only do a mile.
So is, yeah.
Really? All, all the events that my son's been with 5Ks, the walkers do five?
Oh, they do, okay, all right.
They're just a lot slower.
They just go slower, but that's, um, I've been to both where the walkers only do a mile and then the other do, okay, so we want it to, to put it as a run-walk.
And again, if he has any idea on what insurance, um, you know, I'll, I'll research that as well, so.
Okay. All right, I'll save the rest of my stuff then for the, um, committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, and were you able, uh, Mike, you also were able to reach out to the, the bands?
Yeah, yeah, some guys, band, stage, we're all set, I have costs associated with everything,
If any of you have any, any number information, please funnel it to me in writing so that I can incorporate it into preparation for the budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Trustee Drapka, you said you had two bands in place, one was Blues Brothers, what was the other one I probably...
Freeze-Dried.
Freeze-Dried?
And they're each playing one set for 45 minutes?
Uh, well, that's negotiable, we could talk about that. I think that, 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 let's, we could punt that to committee of the whole meeting because talk about how long exactly you want it for. It's, there's really no difference in price and it just all...
But they are both reserved?
They're all set, yeah.
And sound and stage?
Sound, stage, all set, everything.
Great.
And can you spell the names of the bands for me, please?
B-L-O-O-Z-E, Brothers. F-R-E-E-Z-E, Dried.
Okay, thank you.
Standard spellings. Okay. Very good. If there's nothing else on that, then let us move on to new business. Again, simply, I ask that if there, we certainly know that we're going to have the elevator items to pay for and probably more than we originally have looked at the bids because we know there's going to be a greater punch list. We also need to paint the bridge this year, and we, we have to start looking at whether tuck pointing is going to be this year or the following year, so, but we have to start looking at some of those other items, and there, there's always repairs. If there are other items that you foresee that we either need to create or support or put an uptick to, please keep that in mind so that we're ready for our preliminary You have a copy of last year's budget in your packets, under new business actually, and it's there also so that you can refer when we go to the budgetary transfer, but if you want to see where we are, and if you want to see where we are year-to-date, of course, that's after your warrants, you've got the up-to-date report each month. So, you know, we can, we can all start looking at that. Okay. So, let us look at that budgetary transfer, and that is, if you're looking for it in the budget, it's under the assessors division, and the numbers will tell you that when you look at where those items are, but it appears on, the original appears on page three of the budget ordinance, and so would you, Clerk Blau, like to read what the budgetary transfer appropriation is that we're to do?
Whereas there was adopted on the ninth day of April 2019 by the Board of Trustees, trustees of the Town of Riverside in, excuse me, County of Cook, State of Illinois, a Budget and Appropriation Ordinance for fiscal year beginning April 1st, 2019, ending March 31st, 2020, and whereas it is now, it now appears that certain adjustments between appropriation items in the general town fund in said ordinance are desirable and necessary, and whereas Section 3 of the Illinois Budget Law approved June 12th, 1973, as amended, authorities transfers between the various items within any fund as appropriated in such fund by such ordinance. Now, therefore, it be ordained by the Board of Trustees of the Town of Riverside in the County of Cook, State of Illinois, that they're hereby transferred from the unexpended balance in the items as contained in the general town fund in said budget and appropriation ordinance. Auto expense account 2805, sum of $400, which transferred amounts as hereby added to the items as contained in said fund of said ordinance. Education seminars assessor account 2640, sum of $400. Making the adjusted appropriations of these aforementioned items to be auto expense account 2805, sum of $600. Education seminars assessor account 2640, sum of $1,600. Dated January 14, 2020.
Do I have a motion to accept that budgetary transfer?
So move.
Motion by trustee Drapka.
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Hollenbach. Any discussion? Pretty straightforward. Then Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll on that?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. All right, on to the review of the mental health board appointment. As I explained, or as trustee Hollenbach explained, there, there actually is one that will be appointed later. There were two mental health board members who, whose terms expired as of the end of 2019, and having spoken to Ann Danico-Kobitsky, she has agreed that she'll stay on as long as it takes to appoint a new trustee to replace her, but she would like to otherwise retire from that board. So, we have here an appointment to appoint her from January 1st, 2020 until June 30th, 2020, at which time I have been assured that the, that another candidate should be available to appoint to that position.
I made the motion that we appoint Ann Danico-Kobitsky to the, a reappointment to the mental health board for a period of January 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Hollenbach, second by trustee Clark, to appoint Ann Danico-Kobitsky to the mental health board for the term of January 1, 2020 to June 30th, 2020. Do I hear any discussion?
Was, was her term up, Tim?
Yes.
Yes, how long has she been on that board?
Eighteen years.
Wow, that's what...
Okay. Hearing no other questions or discussion, I have a motion and a second on the floor for this appointment to the mental health board. Owen, let's take a roll call.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Very good. Then so it shall be. And just as a review of the township office hours, we did change them last year. I would like to just address the fact that it's been working out well to go until four o'clock, four days, three days a week. I think the term to five o'clock on Thursdays, although I thought it would, was well-meaning, we virtually never get any activity during that final hour. And most recently, the village of Riverside changed its hours, ending at 4:30 every day. So on that Thursday, you know, nobody's coming in even for them, and then, you know, they're really, if there were activity, I would say, yes, yes, let's stay. But over a period of about two months, I think twice we've had somebody who, and then they squeaked in at the very last minute and they could have called and, and come in sooner. But...
I would be in favor, I think just for consistency's sake, having it Monday through Thursday from nine to four, and then Friday you're off at February, right?
Right, yes, that would be my recommendation.
I, I fully go with that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm fine with that.
Then we shall do that as of...
I say they open till six, no?
Till eight.
No, we, we will announce that shortly, but, yeah, we will start posting that right away.
Something for the newsletter.
Yes.
So is that going to start...
That's one of the things we want to put in the newsletter.
Like February 1st?
I think, I think, yeah, the first, first week in February. I'd have to look at how that falls, but, yeah.
Well, February 1st is a Saturday, and then Sunday is the 2nd.
Right, so that'll be perfect. We'll start that with February then. Thank you very much. Do you want to have a motion on that, just so we make it official?
I make a motion that we revise the township office hours, and on Thursdays they're open, Monday through Thursday they're open from nine to four, and Fridays nine to three.
Very good.
I'll second it.
Second, I have a motion and a second to change the office hours of the township office from nine to four, Monday through Thursday, nine to three on Friday. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Motion is carried, I, I vote in favor as well, so. Thank you. And that finishes our new business. And for your information, there is, in case any of you would be interested in this program, I do plan to attend. It's the Township Communicators to meet on Wednesday, January 29th. It will be up in Gurnee, so it's a, a trek, but it sounded like an interesting...
I go, I think I signed up to go.
Good. I, yeah, you should have gotten a sign-up, what is it, Sign Up Genius?
Sign Up Genius.
Right. Very good. And then we did meet with Jen at Via Digirotti again. Everything is clicking along. We were a little delayed in some of our updates to the site because of some personal issues for her. She had some illness and a death in the family, and so we should be back up to, to speed again now, and there's not a lot changing, you know, when we put out news, then we get more hits, and it seems to be working pretty well. Any questions? Very good. Well then, we are on to the approval of our warrants.
I make a motion that the board authorize or ratify payment of bills identified on the general warrant January 2020 in the amount of $19,488.33 as presented today.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Drapka, seconded by trustee Clark, for the general warrants for January 2020 to approve the amount of $19,488.33. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
I just want to make one comment to that. You might see a fairly large business card bill. That is because our check, once again, for payment last month did not make it, and by the time we got word that, by the time we got the next bill, it was time to put it up on the warrants again, so we're paying for two months plus some penalties. I don't know what's going on with the post office.
It's his card.
That's the, it's our credit card.
Oh, your credit card, okay.
Yeah. And I did try to use it for a very small charge the other day, and it was denied because the bill hadn't been paid, so. Enough to drive you crazy.
It's crazy.
Hmm?
I make a motion that the board ratify and authorize payment in the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant in the amount of $2,819.85. Payroll warrant in the amount of $20,552.35. Health warrant in the amount of $1,693.58. General assistance warrant in the amount of $2,400 even. Township radio players warrant in the amount of $200. Food pantry warrant in the amount of $1,796.69.
Thank you very much. I hear a motion to approve those warrants. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. So, I have a motion to approve the following, a motion and a second, to approve the following warrants. The utility warrant in the amount of $2,819.85. The payroll warrant in the amount of $20,552.35. The health warrant in the amount of $1,693.58. The general assistance warrant in the amount of $2,400. The township radio players warrant in the amount of $200. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of $1,796.69. Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Hearing, seeing no other business before this group...
I make a motion we adjourn this beautiful meeting.
I have a motion to adjourn this meeting by trustee Drapka. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Clark. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you very much, and good night.
Thanks.